Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Pennsylvania County Planning Commission Meeting, Thursday, November the 8th, 2018. Roll call, Ms. Meese?
Present.
Mr. Horn?
Present.
Dr. Miller?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Stowe?
Present.
Mr. Haymore?
Present.
Mr. Dudley?
Present.
And myself. Records show eight present, zero absent. On people wishing to address the Planning Commission on items rather than what's on the agenda, I have a Lois, is it Laymore? Signed up?
I think she signed up on the wrong page.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Is anyone here wish to address the Planning Commission on anything other than on the agenda? If not, we'll move to the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, to make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Mr. Stowe, second by Mr. Dudley. The agenda be approved as presented. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion's passed, eight, four, zero against. Approval of the minutes, October the 2nd, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, to make a motion, we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Stowe, second by Mr. Haymore. Minutes be approved as presented in the package. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion's passed, eight, four, zero against. Chairman's report. I'd like to welcome Mr. Hunt and Mr. Sides to the meeting. And also, I'd like to recognize Mr. Pat Meese, Mrs. Meese's husband. Thank you, welcome to the meeting tonight, glad to have you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Article 5, Division 7 of the Pennsylvania County Zoning Ordinance, we, the Planning Commission, have been empowered to hear and decide specific applications in support of said ordinance and to make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors or the Board of Zoning Appeals. In accomplishing this important task, we are charged with promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. We must ensure that all our decisions and recommendations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its posterity. Anyone here to speak to the board regarding zoning cases will be limited to three minutes. At 7:05, case R-18-024 is open to public hearing. Ms. Hayes?
Case R-18-024, Don Mustang has petitioned to rezone a total of 9.33 acres located off Richardson Lane in the Dan River Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to make the zoning consistent with his adjacent land. Once rezoned, all uses listed under Section 35178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mustang is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Mustang, will you come forward to the chair, please? Right there, right there. Do you have anything you'd like to add or present to the Commissioners other than what Ms. Hayes has already presented to us?
Yes, sir. I don't have anybody objecting to it. The reason I'm doing this is to try to get my facts out before I pass on them.
Any of the Commissioners have questions for Mr. Mustang? No one has signed up to speak, so thank you, Mr. Mustang, for coming. At 7:06, public hearing case R-18-024 closed to public hearing. Mr. Horn or Mr. Davis?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mustang is quite true in what he's stating. I admire him for trying to get his affairs in order before that day comes, but he owns the surrounding property, and if you're looking in that packet, he is literally 360 degrees surrounded by A1 agricultural. So he wants to put this also in A1 agricultural in order to prepare for his children. So in case R-18-024, I recommend that we ask the Board of Supervisors to approve the rezoning of his property.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Horn, second by Mr. Davis to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that case R-18-024 be rezoned from R1 to A1. Ms. Hayes, will you call the roll?
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
Yes.
More Stowe?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Motley?
Yes. Zoning has been recommended to the Board of Supervisors to be changed from R1 to A1 by vote of eight, four, zero against. At 7:08, case R-18-025 is open to public hearing. Ms. Hayes?
Case R-18-025, Jesse Hancock has petitioned to rezone a total of 33.28 acres located on David Giles Lane and Snake Path Road in the Chatham Blairs Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District for agricultural purposes. Once rezoned, all uses listed under Section 35178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hancock is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Hancock, will you come forward, please? Good evening. Do you have anything you'd like to present to the Commissioners other than what Ms. Hayes has already presented?
Yes, sir. Just a little brief plan of what my intentions are. I currently live right here in Chatham. And our son's in college, and my wife and I have been searching for some acreage to be a little closer to the table, close to 29, and have some good cell phone reception. And we found it on the property of Snake Path Road. And it's a little over 33 acres. It's actually in four tracts. Probably when the zoning was done, the larger tracts probably should have stayed there while they got caught up and pulled into the R1 zone. Right now, over 65% of my property boundary is in joint, I A1 zoning, on two sides of it. And my long-term plan is build a house back up in the woods approximately 1,000 feet from the road. Have a garage, big enough to put a jump in, there's no light for it. And looking to have a couple horses, a couple burrows, and probably 8 to 12 acres of some mixed field and woods, kind of not all field, but kind of thin a little bit, have a little bit of both. I've done a site plan here. Using an idea of what I'm looking at. Should be enough. And it shows my proposed location for a house, puts me well over 1,000 feet from any existing home there. That's really about it. With the inevitability that's going on, in order to do everything that was done before.
Oh, anything?
Yes, sir. In the last couple of weeks, I've called and contacted some of you, and some of the folks on the board. And since then, I've heard a lot of different stuff come back to me. I've heard about the plan of doing mobile home parks. I've heard I was into a manure spreading system. I've heard a lot of stuff. Unfortunately, for me, none of it's true. My plan has been the same since I began this process. In order to abstain some of the stuff that we're hearing, I'm recommending an offering to the board also, that we place deed restrictions on the property for both the sale and perpetuity. There could be no mobile home parks allowed, no swine allowed on the property, no commercial agriculture farming, including the use of industrial manure spreading, which I have no idea if that even exists, and no single-wide mobile homes other than the one that's existing on the property right now. No more can be added to it.
You offer that in writing as a proffer? Hand it to Ms. Hayes, please.
To be put on as deed restriction.
Right.
And you're gonna put that in writing on, as a proffer?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You did say perpetuate it, make it run with the deed. So if something happens to me, gets inherited, or I sell, or my wife sells later on, it's gonna be a deed restriction.
Anything else? I have a question after you get through.
Yes, sir.
I want to thank you. We met several Saturdays ago on the property. I appreciate you meeting and explaining basically what you were aiming to do. At that time, excuse me just a minute.
Okay. Yes, sir.
We were, the trailer that is real close to the double wide, at that time you was talking about?
Yeah, one of them's gonna have to go.
You was talking about removing the trailer and possibly renovating the double wide for storage and possibly use it as a shop, but not as a living quarters?
Right, definitely not as a living quarters.
But is that still, you still stay, plan to do that?
What I want to build is, I found a perk site, pretty close to where that site's drawn.
Right.
The only thing I have to do is I have to have the surveyors to go out there and do some, some grade checks.
Right.
Because it's gonna be a pump system because of the grade back there, but it sits back in the block back there.
Right.
And by looking at it on a topographical map, I'm 1,000-plus feet off the road, but I'm 1,000-plus feet from any other home that's currently existing.
Also, as you explained to me, where you, you and Dr. Hancock was aiming to put your residence, it's kind of, you go back, go down a little valley in your home, be sent back, but it would be not seen from Snake Path Road, is that?
I'm hoping you can't see it.
Right. And along David Giles Lane and Snake Path, you was talking about leaving a buffer of the present greenery, so it would give you privacy as well as enables on David Giles Lane would have privacy too, is that correct?
Yes, sir. I want to have some select hardwoods cut from the dome side. And throughout, stuff it needs to keep a buffer. Up David Giles Lane, on one, about 400 feet of it, there's a pretty big ridge behind the people's property. It's kind of a built-in buffer right there already.
Right.
It's kind of a drop-off.
That's what you was explaining to me, is that?
And my goal is that when you drive down Snake Path Road, unless you, unless you've been in there, you ain't gonna know there's a home in there. And that's the only thing.
And that will be the only entrance into the property that you are planning right now, is off of Snake Path Road?
My primary interest is there.
Right.
I did draw on that map.
Not, not on David Giles Lane, but on the?
Not on David Giles Lane, but on the access road, there's an access road.
Right.
Okay? And that would only be for emergency situations, because I certainly wouldn't want to go up that hill on David's basis.
Right.
I'd want to come out to the paper. I put on there as for emergency use only. I ain't going out the back of the property.
Any questions for? Mr. Hancock, if you'll sit down in the front, I do have people signed up, and you'll get to come back after they've made their presentation.
Mr. Chairman, let me, let me ask the attorney a question before we make this, I guess this is proper. Is the proffer that he's giving, would that have to be a not signed, notarized statement and recorded in the clerk's office? How does that work to get to perpetuity on? That's what I'm? Well, proffers run with the land, so.
Sorry. Proffers run with the land, so we record proffers and list them. So, once it's rezoned and that's a condition, that would be put to record and go into the chain of title. But deed restrictions, I think one of the conditions would be, before you granted a building permit or the rezoning, he'd have to show us some kind of amended deed that he's put to record that had the deed restrictions in it. I don't, I assume it's not in there now. Have you purchased the land, or is this? Yeah, he?
If a proffer is suitable for, that's okay with me too. Because like he said, it runs with the law. Well, it's gonna have to be something on record.
Right.
Yes.
So, so you, in your, if you want to make a recommendation to the board, if you agree to make a recommendation to rezonate this, you could make, in your motion, conditioned on a proffer or an amended deed in the chain of title that shows the deed restriction or something like that?
The proffer would be less expensive. Pardon?
Yes. Unless you had an attorney friend in the family or something.
That'd be 300 bucks.
Any others?
No.
Mr. Gary Carter? Please come forward.
As you stated, my name is Gary Carter. I owned a lot of residential property on the west side of this property. Probably 40% of the rest of the, you said 65 was A1, probably minus 24% on R and G. And this property addresses a lot of stuff I was concerned about. One thing I would like to hear, would that extend to like poultry farming and stuff like that? Wouldn't it be allowed here?
No, sir. Right, commercial farming is?
Okay. And so, you know, he wouldn't be able to go back later and, you know, like put cows in? When he's asking about a couple of birds, a couple of horses, should he expand it to like 30, 40 horses?
No, sir. Then you'd go into the commercial?
That's right.
Part of it. That's right, you used the word "commercial."
And I don't know if he said, you know, he was going to leave up a buffer between my property and his, you know, back out of green and some of the woods.
Right.
Sounds like to me that probably addresses most of mine. And I will with Hancock to know, I was never in a, had any intention of trying to block anybody's house and having a burrow and stuff like that. I just couldn't understand why it was necessary to do zones A1 to get that, because I was always under the assumption you could have like a burrow, a pet, or two, you know, like a pet and like that, in a small fenced area on your property, if you'd all?
If it's less, if it's five acres or less, if you go over five acres, it has to be rezoned. Am I correct on that, Ms. Hayes?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
You could have incidental agriculture?
Right, five acres.
Tracts of five acres or less, so this, this wouldn't qualify, I don't think.
So I'm understanding he's gonna need more than the five acre fenced area for his burrows and horses?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
And if I may interject, if your fear is that he's gonna do some kind of large-scale industrial farming, in our ordinance and the state, if he tries to do a CAFO, which is a big, highly intensive, like a hog farm, or there are lots of rules and regulations that the state has that he would have to comply for, I don't think that he would be permitted to do that on this tract land.
See, most of my concerns really wasn't with Mr. Hancock. I mean, I know when you, this proffer he's got, they take care of my concerns down the road. But that, I've been there since 1981, and that land has had full property ownership in that area for town. And I've always had, already come to this board once before for zoning, stuff going on to keep it from happening. But he seems like to me he was really going to make the land nice, you know, put it like a house there. And, you know, I'm not, no problem with a couple horses, I know people like riding horses, like me, because I like horses. And so, like, if he's willing to give us the buffer, which is on our property, and like I say, restrict his livestock to that amount, now, I don't believe we'll have anybody this year who's gonna object to that. Has anybody objected to that? We might have stopped this too quick. Could you just stand up?
Mr. Carter, I appreciate you doing that.
Amen. You need to be up here.
He's hungry, he wants to get up for dinner.
That's exactly right.
Any question?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Carter? Thank you, sir, Mr. Carter. And these people I called, if you say you do not want to come, please do. I've got a call that you signed up. This, Cheryl?
Cheryl Hancock.
Cheryl Hancock.
I, I guess I?
Please, please come forward if you want to.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Cheryl Hancock. I'm obviously Jesse's wife. I guess I really don't have anything else to add other than, you know, he's, my goal when I moved down here, and I shouldn't say goal, but I just said that, you know, something that I always wanted to do was just live on a lot of land in the middle of, where nobody can see me. For the most part. And that's kind of what our goal is with that. We're not looking for, I want to go smaller. I don't want to go to more work.
Right.
So that's really, we're just really looking for, you know, our nice ranch home and, you know, maybe a horse, and watch my dogs run around, and just kind of just get back and relax. I'm not looking for any kind of, any more work than we already have now.
Any questions for Ms. Hancock? Thank you. Mr. Ricky Owen?
All right, just want to say, I've known Jesse and Cheryl for several years. Jesse came by my house last week. I don't know, but that's okay. He said, I want to talk to you about something. Sit down, and your pool rise paper showing me your property evolved, and what you're planning on doing. And I said, that's fine with me. And I look at him to be a good, honest man, and I hope that he's trying to do to anybody. And so, I just want to give a very say that, and I'll be hearing some rumors too, but I'm glad I came tonight, we got it all right dealt, and I'm okay with it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr.? Thank you for coming, sir. Mr. Tommy Hook? Any questions for? Thank you, Mr. Hook, thank you for coming. Tracy Hutchison?
I'm good.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchison, for coming. I appreciate you calling and talking to me, thank you. Ms. Tammy Moore?
I'm also good.
Thank you. I want to thank you for calling and expressing your concerns, I appreciate it. If anyone else did not have the opportunity to sign up for this case, wish to address before I call Mr. Hancock back up? Mr. Hancock, would you come forward? Do you have anything you'd like to add or other that what you've heard from the people that signed up? Any questions for Mr. Hancock? Thank you, sir, appreciate it. At 7:24, public hearing case R-18-025 is closed. Ms. Meese and fellow Commissioners, this is in Chatham Blairs District. You have heard what's been brought up. I had calls, concerns, and I'm sure there was some false rumors made, some that turned out to be true, some turned out to not be true. I want to thank everybody that called, took interest in this, and I think it helped Mr. Hancock and Dr. Hancock in expressing how the neighbors feel. I think it brought the neighborhood together. And I want to thank y'all, and I hope you will always feel that you can call and talk to the Commissioners if anything comes up. That's what makes Pennsylvania County a great place to live. And I might say, as you can tell, I'm an old man, but I can remember when it was more tobacco bonds on David Giles Lane and was residential homes.
That's right.
And it has become a bedroom for Chatham, Danville, and the surrounding areas. But thank y'all. I would, at this time, does anybody else have any discussions? If not, I would like for a motion to be made on my behalf, and I'm in favor of recommending to the Board of Supervisors to change the zoning from R1 to A1.
Mr. Chairman, on case R-18-025, the zoning request from R1 to A1, we've seen the proffers that he's given us, and I would send forward to the Board of Supervisors for approval. And all of the information that our attorney gave us to be added on to that, I don't know the wording that he gave us, but that should be added on to it also.
That would be in the motion too?
Absolutely.
That the wording, under the guidance of our county attorney?
That's correct.
I'll second the motion.
Second the motion.
That's correct.
I'll second.
Second by Dr. Miller. Any discussions? If not, Ms. Hayes, will you call the roll?
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
The motion on case R-18-025 to recommend to the Board of Supervisors to change the zoning from R1 to A1 is passed, eight, four, zero against. And thank y'all, if y'all want to leave, I ask you to be quiet, because we have other business to conduct. Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
At 7:27, case R-18-026 is open to public hearing. Ms. Hayes?
Case R-18-026, Larry and Tamra Edwards have petitioned to rezone 2.84 acres located on Pittsville Road in the Stanton River Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for placement of a second dwelling being a single-wide mobile home for a family member. Once rezoned, all uses listed under Section 35178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Edwards is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Edwards, will you please come forward? Good evening. Do you have anything you'd like to add, present to the Commissioners other than what Ms. Hayes is? Any questions for Mr. Edwards from the Commissioners? No one is signed up, so thank you for coming, Mr. Edwards, and we'll, can you, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
At 7:28, case R-18-026 is closed to public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, case R-18-026, zoning request from R1 to A1. I did visit the property, and in fact, I revisited just a few hours ago, and I was unannounced, and, and they've, they've got a dog, so if you ever decide to go there, that dog can go bow hunting with a switch, I promise you. That dog is bad news. But anyway, everything is what they say it is. They're, they're talking about putting a single wide there on the property with them, I think maybe for their grandchildren is what it is. So with that, I'd like to send this forward as approval to the Board of Supervisors.
Motion by Mr. Dudley to recommend to the Board of Supervisors change the zoning from R1 to A1, is that a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Meese. Any discussions? If not, Ms. Hayes, will you call the roll?
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Case R-18-026 is recommended to the Board of Supervisors change the zoning from R1 to A1 by a vote of eight, four, zero against. At 7:30, case S-18-010 is open to public hearing. Ms. Hayes?
Case S-18-010, Gary and Gail Oaks have petition for a special use permit on 171 acres located on Irish Road in the Tunso Election District for a solar energy facility. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, the representatives of Turnpoint, Turning Point Energy are here to represent the petition.
Will you please come forward, Representative? Good evening. Welcome, Pennsylvania County.
Thank you.
I'm Gary Oaks, I'm a property owner. And I've had nobody ever check. I had one couple that had a concern, and when they found out, the solar power was gonna be 500 feet in their house, they were okay with it. Only land, and they all were rounded. And it would be well-f fenced, and the residential projects, we'll see that again.
Right.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Oaks? Y'all want to go ahead and basically tell us, mainly are you gonna have a bond to protect the property, or if you leave the county, or?
Yes, sir, we'll really leave the same bond.
Right. Ms. Stowe, you have any questions more? And Mr. Stowe, you have any questions more?
In my understanding, I couldn't, I could, they had a meeting to call me. Uh, I couldn't attend it. Uh, another one. It's my understanding that this property, even the gentleman that lives right across from it, he would not be able to see the, uh, the, uh, equipment out there?
Correct. So in the summer, um, I started introducing myself unannounced. Actually, no, it was announced because I called everyone. Um, so I made telephone calls to all of the adjacent neighbors and some other community members. And, um, then a few weeks after that, I actually went and knocked on all the邻近的 doors. And again, just to introduce myself, let them know about the project, um, and see if they had any questions, um, that they wanted to ask of me, um, and about the project. And, uh, so of the five or six or seven people that I actually met in person, um, first I have to say how welcoming they were. And, um, once we explained what the project would be, where it was going to be located, what it's for, um, they were very supportive. I was, I was pleased, um, to, to get that reception and the warm welcome that everyone in this county has just been so welcoming. Um, in particular, to your specific question about the landlord is right across the street from the, the driveway that's currently used in that area. I spent fifteen minutes, um, on the porch with that gentleman, and, um, it does, Mr. Ford is his name. And, um, it explained all about the project, showed him all of the, we were just more pictures of what's already happened. And, um, he could not have been my three asked questions. Um, I, I answered them to his satisfaction, and he just does the same thing as you all do. He all comes to visit everyone in the county, and that was, it was heartwarming for me, um, to get that reception. And we're just very excited about the potential to win the project.
This power going to be sold to City of Danville?
Yes.
Okay. How are we going to get it to, to the city?
Uh, through distribution line.
You're going to have to run another line?
There's a, the, the, it's the Whitman substation, which is just out there, and Danville Utilities would run a specific line from that substation adjacent up to that site, yes, sir. The last thing.
Okay. Now, would you plan to send that power over to the substation on Whitman School Road up there?
Uh, yes, and we, uh, yes, sir.
Okay.
F.C. Beverly Road.
Yes.
And that's called transmitter, transfer line, I believe? Is that what that, is that the correct terminology?
Yes.
That is transfer, I believe it's transferring, or transmitter?
Goes on to the distribution system that the substation has. I worked in a power company for a few years, so, yes. Now, do you have somebody maintain that? Um, what you're feeding on to the line? So suppose they have a problem on, out on your side?
The, this system, the solar energy system is, is operated and maintained for a total of, um...
Okay. Okay, and by?
I'm sorry?
Maintained by? City of Danville, or?
By the office.
I was going, yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
Uh, if you guys remember correctly, except you weren't here, this new gentleman right here. But Jared Shock right there, uh, we, you guys grilled him all about, what, a year and a half ago on that project down in my district? Let me just say that as far as this particular operation, turning, um, they're top of the line, hands down. And I know we've got another operation over here that's going into my district as well. I'm yet to see them, so you guys have got a bar to go to. These guys are top of the line. If anything that I had, any requests that I needed, Mr. Shock, all the way from Colorado, gets it handled. So they, and as far as the solar panels are concerned, I go by there sometimes. I didn't even, I thought we were, it was completely empty out there. I thought, what happened to the panels? And what had happened was they followed the sun, and they were completely even. I couldn't even see the panels. I, I, shocked me. I thought maybe somebody had got them some scrap metal or something. I'm not kidding you. So they're top of the line, and we've got another group going in that I think are, are just as, as well, as good. So anyway, I fully endorse them, uh, in another, even though they're not in my district, and I wish we, well, anyway. Top of the line.
Thank you, Mr. Stowe.
Thank you, sir.
Any, any other questions?
Hey, and you're going to have to run a special line from that over to the substation.
There's a, there's an existing distribution line that goes down the road already. I think it's essential what they're going to do, is if they're using another old frame line, uh, is it on poles?
Going to poles already there.
Or if they, if they have to, they're going through the study process now, uh, running a new, a new set of poles. One way they're going to use their existing use, uh, solar line, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be new, uh, real estate work, you know, I respect that.
Mr. Stokes, you have anything you'd like to add to it, or?
I don't have anything else to add, other than I'm sure everybody is of the understanding that regardless of your action tonight, they still have to comply with the full solar ordinance that's in, in our zoning ordinance, which includes things like the decommissioning bond that's come up tonight. So, uh, everything in, in detail will be addressed before they'll be able to get their zoning approval from Mrs. Hayes.
Right, I think they offered a proffer, too. Did y'all get a copy of the proffer?
Yes, we did.
That says they, yeah, the operation and management plan will be submitted, erosion sediment control plan. It also have to address stormwater. The decommissioning plan and a bond will have to be in place.
Yes.
And the maintenance and vegetation, I've expressed to them on, we didn't want the two-foot trees like at the other site. We won't, so under, um, the guidelines of the ordinance, section thirty-five-one-twenty-one, they will have to address that accordingly.
Okay.
And this would be in the motion, too?
Yes.
Any other questions?
I think it's a great thing to use the energy from the sun to green energy, putting it right on the line.
The whole thing.
Low cost.
Think no one has signed up, so thank y'all. And at seven-thirty-eight, public hearing case S eighteen dash oh-one-oh is closed. Mr. Stowe?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that, that we recommend to busy eight, uh, this request, uh, S eighteen oh, or dash oh-one-oh, uh, to be approved with the proper, proffer.
I'll second.
Uh, motion by Mr. Stowe, second by Mr. Dudley, to recommend to the, uh, Board of Zoning Appeals to allow this, uh, special use permit. Any questions? If not, Ms. Hayes, will you call the roll?
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Case S eighteen dash oh-one-one, his motion is passed to recommend to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special use permit for a solar energy facility, passed eight-four-zero against.
And that's oh-one-oh?
Oh-one-oh, excuse me. I turned the page.
It's all right.
Thank y'all for correcting me. At seven forty, case S eighteen dash oh-one-one is open to public hearing.
You got it right now.
You're on the right page now.
Case S eighteen oh-one-one, Danville Farm LLC has petitioned for a special use permit on a total of a hundred-and-eighty-five acres located on Ringo Road and Tom Fork Road in the Dan River election district for a solar energy facility. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Marcus Wilhelm is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Wilhelm?
Hi, I'm Marcus Wilhelm. I'm Lewis Ionium Development Project. Mr. Wilhelm is, uh, I'm a, uh, company, uh, named one day, but, uh...
Thank you for the clarification. Move on.
Y'all, I think I pretty familiar with the project and the site we've, we've given for you for the rezoning. Uh, we had a community meeting where the project was very well received, primarily because, um, the project is over four-hundred feet from the homes on Ringo Road. You know the site, and, and you know if you stand near that parking lot, the project is basically behind the parking lot, parallel to the homes on Ringo Road. So that was, this project is among the two or three, permitted seventy-five projects for Strana. This is among the two or three most concealed projects that I've worked on. So during our community meetings, and, and I think maybe a question came up during the rezoning, um, one, one concern was from some of the Ringo neighbors, uh, Ringo Road neighbors, was what, what kind of maintenance were we going to do behind their homes? And so Brett, uh, named as our chief civil engineer, he suggested that we do a, um, a shaded map that shows, uh, how we will make, make various parts of the property. And this kind of medium colored green is at least a hundred feet from the back property line of the Ringo Road residence. And that area we will be maintaining, uh, making as low growing per mode, but regularly, basically, or at least one hundred feet behind. I think we use the cart path as a, as a, uh, as a demarcation line. So, um, we, we will intend to enter this as a condition of the, uh, S U P, you know, being recorded. And that's what we've got to do. So y'all can see that. This light colored green will be a, that's a main thing along. And, uh, beyond that, I think you're pretty familiar with the project. We have experts here that can answer any questions about any of the specific conditions, uh, the special use process. But, um, you know, we believe the science and party with the area that's permitted use in, in A one. There won't be any adverse impacts.
Bless you, sir.
Everybody's safe and healthy. Project is clean, quiet, dark at night, no traffic. And, uh, we take it now, all of the, the process.
Any questions?
Only question I had, he already answered.
Yep.
No one has signed up, so thank you. At seven forty-four, public hearing on case S eighteen dash oh-one-one is closed. Mr. Horn and Mr. Davis?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I recommend that we send to the Board of Zoning Appeals a recommendation that special use permit be granted. I would like to add that the area that he was talking about, uh, being groomed and maintained, that is thirty percent of the golf course that was closed about two years ago, and currently it's beyond bush hog state. So what they're planning is very, very appealing to the neighbors who own the property adjacent to that. So thank you for that, sir.
Second.
Mr. Horn, also, he will have to, they will have to do the same proffer?
Yes.
Correct.
To follow the guidelines of section thirty-five-one-twenty-one, and the same thing with the maintenance and the decommissioning bond?
And they have agreed to that, yes.
Okay.
Who's second?
Dr. Miller, or Joe, Mr. Davis?
Motion by Mr. Horn, second by Dr. Miller, to recommend to the Board of, uh, Zoning Appeals to issue a special use permit for the solar energy facility. Uh, Ms. Hayes, will you call the roll?
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Motley?
Yes. Motion to, is passed to recommend to the Board of Zoning Appeals on case S eighteen dash oh-one-one to issue a special use permit by a vote of eight-four-zero against. Uh, now, the public hearing on the proposed revisions to Pennsylvania County Code, chapter thirty-five, section thirty-five dash thirty-five, uh, is at seven forty-six is open. Uh, Ms. Hayes?
Okay, according to the public hearing notice that we advertised for, um, they're looking at a residential addiction treatment group home that would be residential group home for the treatment of recovering drugs and alcoholic addictions. And this will fall under special uses under the A one, um, R one, R C one districts.
Uh, I believe Mr. Robertson is here. Would you like to address on anything? Uh, although no one has signed up.
Unless I need to, sir.
Any questions? I mean, I know he was here last month at the meeting, and we questioned quite a bit.
I think the, the House had brought this up, they're looking at it, it's in my district, up in Brazos, up there. Uh, the, the House is down at the end of a, I don't even think it's a state road because asphalt and everything's coming up.
I, I think they moved on from that one. They have a recommendation or a, a contract on another house, but they will have to, once this, um, if you recommend it to the Board of Supervisors for the change, and the Board of Supervisors makes that change to the ordinance, then he will be required to apply for a special use, and he will come back before you, for that special use for that group home at that location.
I just concerned the community knows, well, I don't think the community's going to fuss, but I think they need to know, uh, what's happening, what's going on. And that was, that particular property was too far down in the woods type thing. He would bring up anything.
And, and, and the rea, and the reason that we changed it is while we were going through this process, it's part of the, an offer. So, and, and we ended up with a better fix property.
Sure.
Okay.
I just want to commend you for what you're doing. Anytime that, um, I don't care where it is, if you can help folks that are on drugs, and believe me, if you look at the news, you'll see enough of it, murders, drug abuse, drug addiction. If you can help in any percent whatsoever, I just want to, hands up for you.
And this will be a women's facility.
Sure.
And, uh, we personally knew in the last week or two, uh, three, three people that, uh...
Sure. Yes, sir.
We got a battle on our end, but we can go on together in life.
Yes. Thank you for that, too. Yes, indeed.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
Yeah, indeed. Uh, no problem, Pennsylvania County. The City of Danville is number one in the state, I understand, for the use of drugs. No major problems.
Uh, we got plenty of potential residents, I assure you.
And a county, even in school, quarter percent.
I'd just like to say, I, I hope this is a beginning. Maybe you will consider the northern end of the county in the future.
Well, uh, we were located in Henry County, you know, with our men's center. And, uh, we wanted to get the women's center in, in a different county. And, and so people in, in Martinsville, Henry County are saying, "Well, I can take in the women's center down there." So we have to move. But our, our goal is to, well, make a big impact, uh, here in South Carolina.
And, and you probably consider where the demand is as well.
Well, the demand's everywhere in the state.
Yes. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, sir. At seven fifty, the public hearing is closed. Uh, need a motion, as you have it on your desk? Uh, how the proposal for the revision to the Pennsylvania County Code, chapter thirty-five, section thirty-five dash five, definition thirty-five dash through one-seventy-nine, special use, A one agricultural district, thirty-five dash two-two-three, special uses, dash R one residential suburban subdivision districts, thirty-five dash two-sixty-eight, special uses, R C dash one residential combined subdivision district of the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance for a residential addiction treatment group home. Uh, now, with just a motion following that, is that correct?
Yes, and the addition of the definition also, which is the residential addiction treatment group home, residential group homes for the treatment of recovering drug and alcoholic addictions.
Right. Mr. Stowe? You want to make your motion?
I ma, I make that motion, yes.
Motion by Mr. Stowe, second?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mr. Haymore. Uh, Ms. Hayes, you want to call your roll? That's right, it's a public hearing, so...
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Motion's passed for the, uh, recommend to the, uh, Board of Supervisors of the public hearing, recommendations eight-four-zero against. Uh, Ms. Meese and the commissioners, uh, I want to wish each one of y'all?
Happy Thanksgiving.
A happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy the food. And is there any old business? Any new business?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Motion to move, seven fifty-two. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.